I think that brings it, you know, right where we need to be. I don't see any issues. Are we doing a public hearing? Is that where we're at right now?
Yes, it is. Yes, we are.
Uh, should we make a motion to, I, I want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
It's been opened.
It's been opened.
Oh, it's been opened, okay.
It's okay. He's human.
Nine hours.
Yeah.
Poor God.
It does, uh, it does fit in. I believe there were special arrangements with this plaza too, that really opened my eyes. I didn't understand that, but after the last meeting, yeah, it fits in real well. Lois, how do you think of it?
Oh, boy, why Lois? Did you see me like zooming in on my phone?
Oh, I know you expressed concern about this plaza and how well it's laid out, you know, it really does look nice.
Yeah, because it's, it's aesthetically pleasing. It truly is. It's a very pretty plaza. I like what they did with the sign when I'm looking at right here, but I do have a question. Is there a canopy? Does, it looks like it's, it's sticking out. Is there a canopy?
No, no, it's just the design of the facade.
All right, but you see where I was?
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, I know. It would have been great. There was a reason why I was asking. It was, um, it was a different reason. It would have been great if that was a canopy that that was in front of, really. None of the others have canopies, so. No, they don't. That's why I said it would have been great. There was someplace I was going with this. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with what you've done with it. Thank you. And I like the red letters that he chose and there, it's other buildings there right next to him. Michael's has the red letter, so it kind of does flow with it. You can see, I don't know. Thank you for your efforts. I appreciate it.
Yep, it was a team effort.
I do have a question. Is the background going to be on white or is it going to be more in the color scheme with the rest of the plaza that is? Um, they're more of a red tone.
As per, as per this design, it's based to be white. Uh, that's, that's what's, uh, it's supposed to look like finished.
Okay.
Hmm.
Any other questions while the illustrious board? Andy, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You have another question?
No, no, and that's not, that's not what's in front of us anyway. I was just curious if it was going to be a different color than most of the others.
You'll have time to get the chance to ask it.
Yeah, no, I actually, I think PetSmart's white as well, so.
Might be. Is there anybody else in this public hearing who wants to speak for or against this variant?
Can I ask another question now that Andy brought that up and I'm looking at it that it's not a canopy? Uh, the white, never mind, never mind.
Okay.
It was, never mind. It was picture between picture.
Question to get in the public hearing.
No.
Is there anybody? Is there anybody else that wants to speak for or against us granting this variants? I want to be fair to everybody. I'm talking to the general public right now. Okay, guys, you have anything else you want to say before we come out of this and go to vote? All right, I motion that we come out of the public hearing and go to vote.
Second that.
All in favor, raise your hand, because we're on TV.
Aye. Aye, aye.
That's the only reason I'm asking. Sometimes we drop, things get dropped on this kind of a technology. Okay.
When is the grand opening?
So, uh, the grand opening, I don't have the exact date on that. But it's, uh, it's a few months.
This is Rahiel from Burlington. I can get you that date. If you'll bear with me one second.
I'm looking forward to all the new goodies in there.
All right.
Right now it's slated for a, uh, first of October opening.
Nice, very nice.
I apologize. Are you the one on the telephone?
Yes.
Could you spell your name for me, please?
Rahiel, R A H E E L.
And what was your last name? It's just for my records.
Sure, Yousaf, Y O U S A F.
Perfect, thank you so much.
I have one more question, if it's okay. How long will the other one be closed? It's going to take you, just out of curiosity, to close down one and transfer everything to the other one. How long are you anticipating being closed?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's usually not long, because we have to have certain criteria to class it as a relocation. So I, I, I don't think it, I think it's like two, two to three weeks, just to get the merchandise in.
Right, and customers that are returning something maybe, or just want to pick up a gift or whatever. Thank you.
And, um, when, when the other store is about to wrap up, it will have a clearance sale as well. He might be able to get better deals then too.
We'd appreciate a heads up, or I know my wife would. We were just there today.
No.
Okay, uh, what is the pleasure of our board on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the, the proposed signage for Burlington as presented to us tonight at this meeting.
I will second what Andy just said.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Golevin?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Uh, yes, this is a nice improvement and, you know, welcome to the town of Ulster, staying here. We appreciate that on your part. So yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. I will be communicating tomorrow with Gabrielle then for the next steps to follow.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When old Navy moved, they stocked the new store with new merchandise. They closed the old store on Friday and opened the new store on Saturday.
That's what I was thinking almost. Wow, that's crazy. That's awesome.
There's a lot of merchandise to try to put into another location.
Before, before we move ahead, the reason I'm encouraging everybody to give the long roll, I was just made informed of a meeting that just transpired in another locality, the zoning board. And the board really went against the mandate of who caused the hardship. They didn't want to get into that or hear anything. They just did a complete, yeah, no exploration to step back within six inches of the, of the property line.
You said six inches?
Six inches, uh, the whole room building. And, uh, in addition to a house, and no explanation or nothing, so if there's ever a challenge, if we're on record with a full, you know, a role, long role like that, we explain our vote, chances are it won't go to a court because we're on record. So it's one way of saving the town an extra expense for legal issues. It's also good to think, think it through. People like to know what's on the board's mind. Now, I'll probably say yes the next time, but.
So it sounds like you did a training. I'm proud of you. Good for you. You did.
I was told this by somebody who was a very close friend of mine, and when I was on, all of them in the city council, Tony Crispino, he says, always.
Oh.
Tony.
Aw, Tony Crispino, Clifton Avenue, Tony Crispino.
So it was good advice, because people want to know what you, why you're voting, the way you're voting. Okay, are you prepared to move ahead? I have to go back and bring my screen up here. My iPad, it refreshes too quickly. Okay, uh, let's go to, uh, open a public hearing for Z four oh one, Diane Donnelly. Make a motion, we open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, looking good. Okay. Is Diane Donnelly here, or somebody speaking on her behalf?
I do not see her.
I'm reading the tidings and I don't see anything saying it. Did you receive any other communications other than what we received at the last month?
I have not, no. I have no new documentation. Um, nothing, and I know I sent everything to her just along with everybody else, so I'm not too sure why she's not here.
Was she aware that the meeting was changed, Gabby?
Yes, she was.
Well, good, thank you. I'm sure she was.
Could we proceed with this, Jason, one way or the other? Jason? Jason?
I think he may have left the meeting. I don't know if he was having some issues connecting, but I don't see him either at the moment. We can only.
We have such poor service where he's located too, honestly, such bad, bad service that I have Spectrum coming tomorrow, actually, again. So, um, it, it's in and out. As you seen, I lost you for a second too, so.
Um, I guess we can close the public hearing for now and then circle back and reopen it, if you guys want to proceed that way.
I would rather hear from Jason first, because there is a, always an outside chance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If we could proceed, I'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me do it this way. Anyone want to speak against the proposed zoning variance? We'll take it from the top that way. Is there anyone here who wants to speak against the variants? So we go on record. If you want it. Okay. Try to be fair to everybody involved. Okay, let's, uh.
Sorry, can you hold on? I'm confused. Which, which one are we on right now?
Um, Van Kuren?
Diane Donnelly, one thirty-five Van Kuren Highway.
Okay, okay, got it. So I, I, I thought, um, I thought we had some emails saying that that needed to go just to, uh, to warrant that. Uh, no.
That's her interpretation alone. We still have local.
That was her interpretation, okay.
That's why, when she discussed it, I directed her to speak to our town attorney, because she couldn't, we had to go through this process.
Yeah, so it's important to hear from him.
Yeah. So I opened up for a negative on the variants. Nobody has spoken against granting the variants, though we do have letters on file from the neighbor. Or, you know, we have, we've had something in communication that granted. It is basically about the fill that was used. And.
Yes, um, the neighbor, I got numerous phone calls from her and she, I guess, is the only neighbor now that lives in the area of that knows what happened back then, and I guess whoever the inspector, or it's her understanding that whoever the inspector was then never made him pull any sort of permit. Um, but basically said to go ahead and fill the property. Um, and it's my understanding that they brought, um, not clean fill from what was the old Home Depot site, or prior to Home Depot, I should say, and the hot shop and things such as toilets and just random materials was dumped there and covered with soil. So that is what she expressed to me. I wanted to make the board aware of, because I guess the Realtor, when speaking with anybody looking at the property, they don't have to tell them any of this information prior to selling.
I, I highly doubt it.
Let's listen to her. Yeah, get Andy.
Um, so even, even if it's not quote unquote clean fill, was it, was it, um, something of, of something where, I mean, does she have to do a phase one? Was it something that included substances that are harmful? Or is it just, you know, like you said, just, uh, blacktop and, you know, not, not, and, and believe it or not, blacktop is considered clean fill, even with the petroleum. So I was just curious, i- i- is that a deterrent? Even if that's what it's built on, there are a lot of places that are built on a whole lot worse. So I'm, I was curious, are there any of the things that are supposedly questionable?
I read that.
Make a difference.
I read her, like, there was no accusations of hazardous material. It was just dubious different directions from different places. It wasn't from one, one place. Basically, what half of the stores in this town are built on.
Back in the seventies, they just took one, dumped it in the other. You don't even want to know what IBM was built on, trust me. I mean, you know.
And this is all also just what she's saying. I mean, there's no records of what's been put there. There's no permit of anything being filled. So I mean, there, there's no way, there's nothing for us to go look at and say, this is what's here. It was kind of just done.
She's going to be hooking up into the, the, the public services anyway of the municipal water and sewer. So it's not like her well is going to be compromised. It's not like we're worried about her sept, right? Is she tying into municipal?
Her issue is about the debris that was, I use the word debris, I'm sorry.
No, I'm asking though, for this, this, for this location, right? It's going right into the municipal town, the town sewer and water, right?
There is a water and a sewer lateral to the property.
And, and she's planning on hooking into that, with that, yeah, okay.
I would assume so, but I, she's not here to answer.
That's up to the planning department.
That's a planning, yeah, that, that's.
Yeah, that's not our thing, so.
It's Mr. Ring's problem.
Yep.
Well.
It's Warren's problem.
Warren's problem.
It doesn't go to planning at this point. Um.
Gabby, excuse me, you guys talked, but Gabby, could you call Jason and see if he's going to come back on?
I do not have any contact at home. Um.
I didn't answer his phone. I definitely, I do.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
What's the procedure, uh, if the person that's asking for the variance doesn't show up? What happens?
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
I mean, in the past, yeah, in the past, it's been tabled, um, but I'd rather check with Jason and see how he would like to proceed legally.
Yes, hi, Jason. Um, we have a question for you. The property on Van Kuren, the individual's not here. Can we proceed with the vote, or do we have to table this?
Is he the same question?
The question was, she's not here. Can we proceed with a vote, one way or the other, or do we have to table it till she is here?
Are there other neighbors there?
No, nobody else to speak against or on behalf.
There's letters.
We have the letters on file from last time with us, so that's about it. The same letters you have.
I would suggest that we I spoke to her on Monday and she said she would be there.
Well.
So I, I would suggest we, um, open the public hearing.
Which we have.
We have, uh, you have, okay, good.
Yeah.
And I would suggest we keep the public hearing open until the June meeting.
Okay, you know, I've done that once or twice before.
So we would table it.
I, I will be on in like five minutes.
Okay, so we'll keep the meeting open, but then we'll proceed with the preliminaries. Is that correct? That's legal?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
So you'll, you'll, uh, make a motion, we'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the June meeting, to continue it open to the June meeting.
Okay, everybody got that?
Yeah.
We'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on this particular case to the June meeting.
And just as you know, Bob, it's tell the board that I didn't speak to her on Monday.
Okay, can anyone? Can anyone hear what I'm? Go ahead.
Yeah, I spoke to her on Monday and she indicated to me that she would be at the meeting on Wednesday.
All right. Well, she's not.
Making an emergency, I'm thinking.
Yeah, maybe something happened.
So the recommendation of council is this, we keep the public hearing open for her until June. We don't close it. All right?
That's correct.
And then we'll, we'll just, we'll just continue onto our preliminary. Thank you, Jason. I know you'll be back on in a few minutes. If I made a mistake, you feel free to correct me.
Don't worry about it. Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
I hope everything's okay with her.
Yeah. Okay, so this is what we're going to do. I'm going to make a motion that we continue the public hearing for her until June.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now we can proceed to our preliminary, uh, information. That's what I was concerned about. I didn't want to spend all night.
Wait, did Gabby have to do a roll call for that?
No, we haven't called the meeting yet.
Yeah, it's up to you. I could, I could do it either way.
This is just preliminary. I, that's cool with me. If you feel comfortable.
You know what I mean? Just because she's not there, we're on record and.
Since we're tabling it, let's do it. Ms. Smith?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Circle eleven?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
We're going to keep this meeting open due to the fact that we want to be fair to the applicant, and we're going to open it till June, so I'm going to vote yes on that. We want to be fair to everybody. But, uh, don't try our patience. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Next on the order of fun and games. Preliminary hearing, Candy Coon.
Yeah, um, it's actually Christian artist. I'm on for Candy. I purchased the home in between waiting for this. She's also my mom. She still lives here, if that matters.
Okay. As long as you're entitled, uh, uh, power to speak for her.
Sure, I mean, I own the property. Does that give me enough?
Yep.
Oh.
Okay. A variance to move your shed. I had the paperwork on that. Can we bring that up? I'm getting a stiff neck going between computers. I know there was a hand sketched drawing of what is intended to be done with this.
Yeah, it's very well drawn. Would you say so myself?
It was.
Yeah.
I love confidence.
I think Burlington people should hire you.
I agree.
So now give us an explanation of what we're looking at.
Sure. So there's a, there's a shed existing already due to, to the topography of the yard. Uh, the whole thing is on basically what you would call like a thirty degree angle, so you can't put the shed anywhere else. When the shed went in, there was another neighbor to the other side. Turns out there's a right away in between there, and we just need to get a variance because it's not twenty feet from the property line.
Okay. I'm taking these little dots across here. Shows the gradients of the hill.
No, it's a, that's a little fence that's there. Uh, that's all.
Good thing I asked.
I couldn't, I couldn't add in the gradients of the hill. I'm not that technically savvy.
Yeah, don't have to be. This right of what you have there, is that a paved right of way, like a share?
No, it's just a, it's a dirt right of way that goes into some undeveloped woods.
I'm sorry, undeveloped what?
Woods.
Woods.
Woods, he said.
Okay.
The power lines up behind you?
No, they're further up the road.
Further up, right? Yeah.
Yep.
So what is that, on the other side of the right of way? That sketch, that artistic?
Yeah, that's a, that's the artistic rendering of the neighbor's house.
It is a master. Yeah, thank you.
Actually, the neighbor's house faces the right of way. Um, they use that as their driveway to get in, but it's still set, you know, on the road.
How wide is that right of way that you're six foot from? You said twenty feet?
Well, it's six foot from the line of trees, right? Which is where our line is, and then there's about three to four feet of some brush, and then there's the dirt road. Yeah, that's not it. But and then there's the, and then there's the dirt, the dirt, uh, right of way is about, I don't know, eight feet, ten feet wide.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, so the highlighted property is your property.
Yep.
And there's the dirt road, and you're coming up. Okay, I see what you mean.
But he said that the neighbors used that to get into their, their driveway, so if they, they had a delivery or anything, it still wouldn't affect it because you'd still be twenty-six feet.
Oh, yeah, we're.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's very far away. It's also the shed is, is already there, so there's no reason to worry about delivery.
There's always a reason to get new furniture, trust me.
Yeah, yeah, but I have two driveways, so I'm okay. I can get it wherever we need to go. Thank you for worrying about that. You're right.
Thanks. I was concerned about the neighbors too, though, you know, make sure that everybody has.
They're good.
Is that a right of way into the vacant land?
Yeah, it actually stops, as you can see, it stops right at the end of, uh, all of the neighbor's property. The right of way only goes to, to the, the land.
Okay.
It doesn't actually go into the back, into anywhere. Just, it's, there's a, right now, a tree had fallen and there's a tree across it, so.
All right.
Christian, are you controlling this PowerPoint for us right now?
No, ma'am. This is not me. Do not.
No, it's me.
Gabby? Who is? I can't hear. Who's doing it?
It's me, it's Gabby.
Gabby.
Gabby, you're fabulous. This is wonderful that you're so on top of this, like, this, I have to tell you. Kudos to you.
Yeah, that definitely helps.
Yeah, very impressive. How, yeah, great job, Gabby. Thank you.
Just trying to make it easy so you guys all understand what we're looking at.
Yep, it helps.
I have no questions. I mean, come on board. It's up to you guys. What do you want to do?
We have to go, this has to go to public hearing, right?
Correct, and we're not.
I'll make a motion. Um, I'm okay if we move it to a public hearing. You want to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we move it to a public hearing.
I'll second that. With the Gabby.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Circle eleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
I like to say I give up, but I'm going to say an explanation. This is finally done before. It looks like a good, it doesn't affect anything, like I say. So, yeah, it's the variance, not by his making. All right, because you see that body of water, you can't put it over there. So I'm going to say yes, let's move to the public here. Hello, buddies? So, sir, I think you're going to be scheduled for next month. Because you're unanimous, so you'll be on a public hearing.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Art.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys, have a good night.
Great job for your mom, by the way. Great job for your mom. Happy Mother's Day to your mom too, Christian, from Lois Kachel Teller.
I will, I will definitely tell her.
Thanks. Wow.
Hello, sir. Okay, we have Z four oh six, Jason Hallwick. We have a six foot fence with a setback, ten, ten feet from, uh, Addis Street, that's on East Kingston. It's the Hallwick. What are you going to do? I hear feedback.
Basically, yeah, I hear it too. Thank you, Chairman. I heard, I thought it was me, and I'm trying to turn something off.
Well, they're coming after you. They're coming from, they're just, they're coming.
No, no, no. I'm thinking I had, like Andy taught me, had to do it, run them both without the feedback, and I was doing really well, so I heard that, I thought.
All right. Mr. Hallwick, are you with us?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, first off, thank you for sitting there and being so patient with us.
That's all right, no problem.
So, want to explain what you have to do and why?
I'm fencing my yard and uh, I don't know how else to explain it.
There we go.
I don't know what else to say.
Well said. And I need you to say yes. Sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, hour's moving around.
It's a summer one.
Let's put the hour where we're going to be, uh, giving the variance, okay, Gab? This side here, right, on Addis Street?
Yeah, all the way, um.
Okay.
Yep, from there to there, yeah.
So you're running a hundred foot fence?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
That's along the back end of your property. That's just the back of the street. I'm doing the sides and the, everything else too. That's another hundred and sixty on the one side and almost the same on the other.
But I'm not paying for that.
It's about four hundred and thirty feet altogether, so.
Congratulations.
I need a second mortgage on that one.
Yeah, right.
DIY. Are you doing a wood fence right now?
Yeah.
Rough cut of trees in the backyard.
Yeah.
I hope you bought that wood for COVID.
Well, I just got it a couple, month and a half ago, and it's gone up twenty dollars a section since then, so.
Yes, it has. It's so sad.
Warren, excuse me, Warren, what should be the setback on that side of the property?
Thirty.
Thirty, wow.
From the center, Warren? Center Road?
Edge of the road.
Edge of the road.
In the town of Ulster, any portion of your property that fronts a street is considered a front setback.
Okay.
He has a through lot, which means he has two front setbacks.
Wow.
Oh. On John Street?
Yeah, it's pretty narrow streets.
That's a street that goes down to the new bike trail, right?
Yep.
East Kingston, yep.
Yeah.
So if you look at my cursor, here's Addis, where he's gonna be ten feet off of.
Where was the, yeah, I could, I could see what thirty feet would be a.
There's, there's no driveways either side of me.
Gabby, can you go to Ariel, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's six foot high, you said the fence is gonna be six feet high?
Yes, yeah.
And what kind of fence, seriously, the wood, you're gonna do wood?
No, white vinyl.
Oh, my goodness, good for you, I'm jealous.
I just thought of taking care of the wood, it's gonna be a lot of extra work, so it's cheaper in the.
So why did you settle on six feet?
You want me to go eight?
My question would still be, why, why, why eight feet, I mean.
No, but.
Is there something that you can't move it back far enough, I see a structure, I think, there?
Uh, why ten feet off the road, you're saying? Why do I wanna do a setback at ten feet, you're saying?
Why do you need the variance is what I'm really asking for, because it looks like you got some room here, so I'm trying to figure out that one, is there a structure back there?
No, that's, that's probably my, uh, it might be my trailer or something sitting there. But I got my, I got my camper back there, I got my trailer back there, and that's about it, and I got my pool back there too. I do have a pool.
It's like, why you have to not follow zoning laws, so this is called a variance, and you have to justify why you need the variance, that's all, it's just like, you don't have the room to go back thirty feet, that kind of a thing.
Well, I wouldn't be able to store all my, my, my trailers and stuff in the yard, you know? I got a thirty foot camper that I need to get in there and stuff like that.
Okay.
And it's a, I figured it's a dead end road, I didn't think anybody'd have a problem with it, my neighbors don't care, I spoke with them, they didn't care.
That's.
So is this going down the hill, are you on the hill part or top?
Yes. The White House is about at the top of the hill, the one that's to the left there. That one's at the top and then it starts going down, down the hill towards me there.
And they just redid a house near you.
Yep, that's uh. Yep, two houses up from me, yeah.
Two houses up.
Yep, to the left, two houses from Ja- on John Street to the left, yeah, right where the arrow is, yeah.
Right there, so that won't affect them either?
No, it wouldn't affect them, no. Your closest driveway is the one down on Addis Street there, at the top of the hill, which I would, I believe his site would probably be above my fence anyway.
Yeah, you're just.
Great neighbors to have with a pretty house like that, you know, somebody taking care of their property like that, it's really great neighbor to have.
Yeah, you got a nice distance there.
That was a beautiful hamlet at one time, it was, every yard was beautiful, absolutely gorgeous, but.
Let's hope it gets that way again.
Hope it does too, I really do, my mom's.
I rode these case in school bus for many years.
Yep, my family worked at Brickyards for fully closed.
Who's talking, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Your family worked those Brickyards too?
The Mitchells.
Well, mine were F A's, F A Y's, in those, in St. Coleman's Church, if you look at the um pews and up on the altar, the altar has some of the original bricks from the bricklayers that carried them up and built that altar, as a matter of fact, the altar across the street that they moved because of Kalanis was all the original bricks carried up by our families, Andy's family, your family, my family, ever, probably Mr. Reggino's family, somehow, you know? So, yeah, it's very nostalgic there, it could be absolutely gorgeous neighborhood.
Just to let you know, Hallwick, they used to say that the houses that my grandfather, my nanotes, lived in was built by the lunch buckets from his four sons of him coming up from the uh, for the bricks, every day, they fill. Bucket with bricks.
My, my neighbor Motsi, Motsi used to tell me that, also Motsi, when he was my neighbor here, he told me all about that.
The Naggies built their houses, there was four Naggy houses across from John's Quick Check there, one of my sisters live over there, but those houses, our cousin Phyllis ended up marrying George Naggy, the Naggies carried them in their lunchboxes. Literally, in their lunchboxes and built those brick houses that you see across from John's Quick Check, and and they're still standing, they're beautiful.
Yep.
Yeah.
He's not building a brick fence, he's building a vinyl fence.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Historically, let's, let me ask you a question and bring us right back on track, I, I'm gonna make a motion, we move this to public hearing. Unless there's any more questions, I'll back off until everybody's satisfied.
Sorry.
I wanna add something else also, if I can.
Okay, sure.
That little, there's a little ten foot by a hundred foot section there, that's over to the right of my property, where it's an Addis, that's gonna be also fenced too, I'm in the process of buying that now, that's gonna be fenced.
Can you say, repeat what you just said, I'm sorry.
She just colored it in there, that little sliver is gonna be mine shortly and I'm gonna fence that also.
But that's.
Well, let's, let's, I don't know. Let's deal with this first and then you know, you know, you know the process. Unless you wanna, well, you don't own that property, correct?
Uh, the lawyer's got the paperwork right now and I'm gonna be signing it in a couple days, so that, we're in the process of doing that as we speak, so.
So, may, may I ask the question, because if you're gonna change the fence, then you really, then you'd have to come back, why would you wanna do this and then do it?
Well, I put that, I put that on the thing when I did it, that's what they said to do, so.
But.
If you look at my drawing, it's on there.
I have a question, Warren, if he received permission, the way the applications are written, and who's appropriate to be in front of the board, if he received permission from the previous owner that he's purchasing the property from right now, could we incorporate that fence with this, so he doesn't have to spend the additional expense and the additional application fee, I, I mean.
Yeah, but that's a good point.
That section of fence in that sliver is on the application.
It's at the very top of the application.
Up there, very top of the application, right there, it's included.
It's included, okay.
See why Warren's so good, so you're covered, Warren's got, thanks, Warren.
I'll proceed with my motion to move this to public hearing.
I second it.
Okay.
Steve, was that you?
Yes, it was.
It was Steve, yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Golevin?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
I give up, yes.
Well, well, you have the property by the time of the uh public meeting?
When's the public meeting?
Next month.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, I should, yeah, that, like I said, the lawyer has all the paperwork, he's doing everything now, we just put it all in two days ago, so. He should have that written up and.
It'll be on June ninth, just so you know.
Okay, I should, I should have, but no problem by then, yeah, I should have.
Do them, but you need to have it done and wrapped up by June ninth.
Who's your lawyer, I have to ask?
Uh, it's my neighbor Cliff Cole's lawyer, he's the one I'm buying.
Oh, very cool, but Gabby Warren, wouldn't he just need a letter at this point, even if it wasn't closed?
I was just gonna ask Jason if, for whatever reason, it doesn't go through by then, Jason, would a letter from Cliff Cole suffice for permission for when he does purchase the property?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, so if, in any, at any rate, if, if for whatever reason, Jason, it doesn't go through, um, just see if you can get something in writing, I do have a letter that you can have him have notarized, giving you permission to apply for the variance.
Okay, alright.
Very cool, thank you.
See you next month.
Okay.
I have to do a drive by, I'm gonna drive by and take, check it out, good luck to you.
Thank you, bye, thank you.
Okay. We have discussion on board.
Um, can I just say something real quick? Thank you, everybody, for trying to make it easier for one, another one of our residents, honestly, I love our board that we do that for our residents in Town of Ulster that deserve that, so.
I try to make it easy for, as easy for the applicants as possible.
That's our job. We just, we save it for lawyers and businessmen.
We have a great board, we really do.
Okay, now, next up on our voting order, we have discussion about the proposed digital sign law. I'm, I'm beat on it, I realize you're treating like any other sign. Biggest thrust of this, I believe, will rest mainly with, with Warren on the enforcement of the issue and on the planning board. Uh, you guys have anything else you wanna add to say, this is our opportunity to put it in there.
Bob, I just wanna say the planning board met last night and they uh endorsed the um proposed law and they asked the town board to, to adopt it, so just wanted to let you know that.
Well, let's not let the planning board one up us here.
Sure.
I thought that's what happened at the la- at our last discussion, that it was being forwarded, just like, like Jason said, that's the way I understood it, yes.
There was some questions and awarding, from what I understand, so. For the guys to clarify that. So, if nobody has any objections, I guess, and let's make a a moralizing resolution to let the board, that we agree with it and the board should pass it, as, how about that?
I think that's a good idea.
That's fine.
Okay, so, um, I don't know how to word it exactly. But.
What I can suggest is um a res- a motion to ask Gabby to send a letter to the supervisor um indicating that the zoning board uh supports this, this proposed law.
Whatever he said.
I'll make that motion, what Jason said.
I'm double second it. Alright, all in favor?
Oh, we'll do a roll call for this one. Ms. Smith?
I have to say no, honestly.
You're gonna say no to forwarding it to the town board for approval?
No, I, I'm gonna say no to the approval, I just feel that it's taking something away from the zoning board, we won't be the zoning board forever. And I feel that um the zoning board was established for a reason, and the planning board was established for a reason, and I have to say, I say no. There's plenty others to say yes, so I, I say no, I, I don't wanna see something taken away from the zoning board or the planning board for that fact, I think they balance each other out.
Okay, Mr. Golevin?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Um, we still have the authority to decide on the size of the board, of the board, the size of the sign. Where we still treat it like a sign, it will be coming before us. This is something that's coming at us in the future, we're gonna have to deal with it now or deal with it piecemeal, what, we'll plan it at a time, at least now we'll have some standards. I do agree, though, we have to be careful to give away our authority that we have, because we're basically the last appeals that people have before they have to go to a court physically to do that, I am gonna vote yes on.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just add something, the reason, may I, I'm, I'm, I am voting yes because I find that it, when you have a clearer definition of what is allowed, it, it's not that it takes our importance away, but it gives us better guidelines to streamline the process for the public, so that, that's.
I agree.
Voting yes.
Right, and let me clarify something, I agree with the proposed law, I would thousand percent support the proposed law. I just wish it would stay with the zoning board of appeals and not be transferred to the planning board. I like the law that was established, Jason put a lot of work into that, and so did Jeffrey. And, and it's good, I like the law, I just don't like the idea that it was transferred to the planning board, so please be clear on that, it's not that I don't agree with the law, I do agree with the law and we needed a law in place and a law such as what they um, they came up with. So I just am uncomfortable with losing that power, that, not power, I, I just think that the people deserve a balance, our residents do, so that was my, that's why I said no, just to clarify myself.
Okay, well. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for letting me do that.
If you have more stuff to do.
No, that's not it.
And they'll be covering you for everything.
No, you're missing it, I guess.
We have one more thing to discuss, uh, that's gonna go with a recommendation with one, no. Uh, one more thing to discuss, and we discussed this kinda like in emails, uh, some point in time, real soon, we're gonna come back to live, in person hearings, public hearings. And I'd like to get a poll of all you guys, how you feel about that, it won't obviously be now, but probably when the town board meets like that, we'll also be meeting that way.
Already does.
It does?
Yes.
Bobby, uh, planning board met last night and they voted in a consensus manner to go back to public meetings in person. And their, their chairman is gonna look into whether the senior senator might be used for those, for, for a meeting, a little more open. People can spread apart, um, so they're going, they're looking into it, they haven't made a decision about June yet, but they indicated they are exploring meeting in person, so just to give you some context.
Thank you, I wasn't asking for a decision for June, but I just wanted to know how everybody felt, so I know it's coming. Uh, we just have to deal with it, we get past the COVID area and move ahead. So, I think we wanna take a little poll, and we could pass along how we feel about this. I'm for, I mean, I have more of a risk than you can imagine.
But I will, I will say at the beginning of the pandemic, when we were still holding planning board meetings, we did hold them in the senior center. And I had it set up, I'd go in there and set up before the meeting, so everybody was socially distanced. You know, nobody was closer than six feet to anyone else, we checked everybody coming in, um, if we get a large group, then certain people will have to wait until it's their turn to come into the building.
Which we can do, when, call them in according to how they are on our a- agenda. For this.
Cause you can.
Yeah, we can do that.
You can fit quite a few people in there in groups, um, cause you guys don't have, like, the, the planning board last night, I think we had nine. And that's a lot of people, um. So, yours, I mean, tonight we had uh five and one person for each, so five of you, me, Gabby, and five others, so we would all fit in there, I guess the real question's gonna be how are you as a board, wanna be situated at the head of the room?
I, I personally don't have a problem with, um, when it comes to the public hearing, is that gonna be uh limited to how many people of the public can come in, or uh?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit the number of people in the building, so in, in the building, you know, by the social distancing, so if we get a public hearing, we had, um, I'll have to clarify if we're still gonna do this, we were taking temperatures and taking information, I was informed now, we are not doing that.
Right, you can't do that now.
Can't do that now, but we can limit the number of people in there, so I'll have to have a sign in sheet, why, where, what you're here for. Um, cause people come in in varying times, and then we'll go with the first one, if there's fifteen people that wanna visit the first public hearing, then the rest of the people that are there for something else will have to wait.
Right, so we follow, they have to go according to our agenda.
Yep.
They have to wait outside, um, what if, what if uh, uh, the number of people that do wanna attend a hearing uh exceeds number we're allowing to come in, um, you know, some people might, might, might not uh appreciate that, but then they don't have their voice heard.
We could do that in chips, the ones that are speaking, they're finished, they can then leave the room, because they're basically are done, okay? And the next bunch can come in, I mean, after a public comments section, the ones who were speaking, already spoken, they're done.
Only because I feel like if you're going to go to a public hearing and then you're shut out of the public hearing, only because then we need to somehow make it so you can hear it.
Live.
With different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that's the, my only concern really is.
I mean, I think either you're gonna have to continue to make it available on Zoom for those who are, can't get in, can listen to it. But if you have everybody and it's only in person again, and you're limiting how many people and, just because they've made their point, they have every right to sit and listen to everything else that's been said and discussed.
Well, that's true, I didn't think of that.
I mean, our state has the open meetings law that we really do have to follow those guidelines, God forbid something, you know, and just another suggestion, when Glide Path was going on and we received more people than what we anticipated, what the supervisor, Jason suggested was, we, how, they had. we, how, they held off the meeting for, I think, another two weeks till they could get into a larger um, place, I don't remember how you did it, Jason, what, do you recall that, Jason, when everybody was crunched in there two years ago, and the supervisor postponed it or something?
Every once in a while, we will have a meeting, you know, even pre-pandemic, uh, that, you know, the fire code says we can't have more than seventy-five people in the room. Very rarely, once every five years, we'll have, we'll, we'll get that situation. Um, and then we can just adjourn the meeting until we get a bigger room, or, you know, we, there's ways around that. Uh, I, I, I think for this board, we're not gonna have thirty-five people.
I don't think.
I, in, in the senior center, I, I really doubt that, if we do, we will deal with it, we'll keep some people outside, you know, there, there's ways around it, but um, I, I don't think we're gonna get thirty, thirty-five people in, in the senior center. We're, we're not the cool kids, we won't get the people.
Until they watch us on Zoom.
Don't laugh too hard about this, but is there an outside area that has in the town ulster that you could hold the meeting at during the summer months, if it's nice weather?
You know, one, one option I've, I've kicked around, it would be the Robert Post Park, the pavilion, um.
On mosquitoes.
I love that idea, Jason.
Could work for the summer, um, I don't think it's gonna work past October, um. You know, it's up to the board, I, I, I mean, it's whatever you, all of you are comfortable with. And I think it really should be a consensus of all of you, um, how you wanna proceed, either continue Zoom for the foreseeable future, go to the senior center, go to the park, um, you know, whatever, whatever is, is comfortable for all of you.
I love the park idea, I think it's fabulous, it's open, open wide, we're under pavilion regardless of the weather. There's facilities there, and it, it's beautiful.
All I can tell you about Post Park is, it's always windy.
It's, it, it, you don't know what you're gonna get, it's gonna be hot, it's gonna be muggy, it's gonna be buggy, you need some kind of a sound systems, because you're still gonna have to record the meetings. It's not as easy as you think it is to just push it outside.
I also need a way to be able to record my meetings, so you can hear them. That's also in there.
So that's a technological problem. I have one question, Warren, which is a larger of the two facilities, Brat or Town Hall?
Um, right now, Town Hall is very difficult due to the constraints put on it by the court system. There's all sorts of plexiglass and.
Oh.
And so, uh, we can look at it, I mean, they've been conducting it there, when the town board has their meeting, they put three up on the Diaz, and then two down on tables. And then we just sit sporadically through the room. Um, I believe we can fit more in, in senior center, but I can do some research, and I'll talk to the supervisor about the viability of using the courtroom now, because we did not use it in the beginning of the pandemic.
Correct.
So, um, I'll get you more information.
Yeah, I would like to have a higher ceilings and more space, I think that would cover a lot of the issues we have. And at Town Hall, you actually can hear outside the little doorways on both ends.
I like to zoom for a few more months, myself.
What about the room up at the highway department where you go in for pre-planning and planning board, Warren, that one back room there, I haven't been in there in almost two years.
What are you kidding me?
No, I don't recall how big it was, I just said I haven't been in there in years.
At least they have a refrigerator and coffee maker.
I can fit the board in there, and that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a good idea, then.
No, that's tiny.
You wanna hold it in the highway garage?
No, oh god, no, no.
Clear out the trucks first.
It was a big room, I remember.
Alright, I wanna.
Oh my god, no.
I wanna get a consensus of everybody, do we stay in the Zoom? Or do we?
Yes.
Okay, I want for Zoom.
That's my vote.
I, I mean, I've been on Zoom only because it just keeps everything in one location for me, so I have my recordings, I have everything, it's just easier. Record-wise, everybody can tune in, um, where people aren't separated, it just, it works better. I mean, if it's something, if it's just a few people, we could probably do it in person, but when I get to more applicants, and, and just in a confined, tight space, you don't know if, if everybody's vaccinated and it's not required to ask. Um, so I don't, I mean, like I said, if it's just a couple applicants, it's not a big deal, it's easy. But when you get into more people, ten on an agenda, not that we see that often, but when you get into that, it's a little trickier.
We continue to deal with the public, we keep thinking about, it's just about us, and it really is, we are a public entity, we are, you know, not a public entity, but we are here, we're serving the public. And I just feel like, even though I'm vaccinated, I'm fine with no mask, and I'm fine with being with people. I feel like it's just a little bit too early, I think we need at least another two months, maybe it, towards the middle of the summer, we can really make another plan, but that, that's kinda how I feel, I think it's just a little too premature to start
I, I feel.
Back online.
I feel the same way, I, I don't wanna take anything back to my wife who has leukemia, so I have to be extremely careful. She has no rea, we're all vaccinated, but that doesn't matter, you know, you got chemo, it doesn't help. So I, I, I'm gonna suggest this, to see where you guys wanna go with it. Let's put this discussion off till June. Okay, we're gonna do Zoom in June, okay? Well, yeah, I know.
Sorry, what did Mr. Reggino and, and Kevin and Jason, I mean?
I, I have no problem with, with, um, in person, but I, I completely understand what everybody's saying, and, and I agree with that, and that's fine with me also, so, um, whatever you guys decide, I'm fine with, I, I don't mind doing it by Zoom. You know, I think it, I honestly, Zoom does make it a little easier for people, they don't have to drive out to the place. Um, you know, uh, we have all that information, Gabby puts it up, all the, the views and all that, we're all seeing the same thing at the same time. Uh, you know, so I, I'm, I'm fine with whatever everybody wants to do, I'm, I'm good with it. I think it's important to eventually get back, start getting back to some sort of normalcy, you know, but if we're gonna wait, that's fine.
Steve, what do you think?
I'm fine with going back, but I, I also respect everybody else's feelings, um, like Andy, I, I go without a mask, I, I am vaccinated. You know, I like to get back to some normalcy, but, um, I don't wanna make anybody uncomfortable, so Zoom is fine until everybody, um, feels that we can get in the building and, and be safe.
Yeah, I think Zoom is safest way, I think Zoom is also convenient for me, honestly. I love the way Gabby pulls everything up, of course, right there, it's in front of us, I don't have to like squint at the paper. I like Zoom, but I'll go back if you want us to. Uh, yes, I was vaccinated, yes, I will wear a mask, and the, whatever you decide, I think it's, Zoom's convenient. I'd like to see us go back around September, October, after summer, and at, more vaccinated, you know, it's just under control.
Okay, so we just. Following the board.
Well, what we could do is this, alright, we'll discuss it again in June, and we know for a fact, June, we will have a Zoom meeting. We might even have another one in July. Okay, but for now, whatever documents come out, it's gonna be Zoom.
Okay.
And we'll talk about it again, things can change, this stuff is changing so fast, your head is spinning. So, that's how I feel, that's just my opinion. I want, I want many of you guys.
So I can keep going camping then, I don't have to worry about.
Yeah, I know, you had that.
I know, I'm going away.
No, I'd also.
Makes it easier with that, too.
Right, yes, I, yeah.
I think the work that was done by this board on that Burlington sign was outstanding. We all came. We asked some questions. Correctly, you tried, it was a great job, and also Warren was outstanding, outstanding source of re, a resource, and clarify this. I had no idea there was an agreement in that facility, I was treating it like any other sign, so Warren did a great job on that. We appreciate your work on that, and Gabby, you were hitting, you hit it out of the park tonight. Alright, so.
If I, if you don't mind, what did Jason think about this? I mean, Jason's dad, he's also under our attorney's dad first. Does he prefer the Zoom, or does he prefer the in-person?
I, I agree with what, what Kevin and Steve said, I'm happy, in person, I'm happy doing Zoom, to whatever everyone is okay with, thank you, Lois.
You're welcome, Jane, Warren, Warren's always working.
What difference does it make where I am?
Yeah, with all that stuff? You're probably better off in there.
I have more resources here, but it's, you know.
And it's, this, I mean, you have, everything at your fingertips, it's, it's incredible, okay. I wanna tell everybody, you did a great job tonight, um, um, but I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, before you do, uh, with the, uh, Van Kuren Highway one there, we're, that's just, that's shelved for now, right?
Yeah, if you can, treat it as though it's been tabled till next month, but the public section is open, so that's.
Okay.
So we're treating that. And she does it next month, there has to be a gut check on what we're gonna do with this.
Yeah. I hope she's okay. Happy Father's Day next month, everybody, y'all miss yous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll, all in favor?
Uh, yes.
Do you enjoy this beautiful weather?
Bye.
Bye.
Alright.
Good night, everyone.